9:30 we'll call a special work session at work. Everybody will balance this. Dear God, right now in this country, we're faced with a lot of things going on there. Protest, rioting, looting, anger of an unfortunate citizen or man lost his life. But where the children of God are being pitted against each other and they are using violence against each other, I pray that you show them wisdom and kindness in their heart to understand that they can be upset and disagree and still be able to protest in peace and get their message across without damaging people's businesses, their livelihoods, their homes, for people physically. I also ask that you put your medical protection over the surgeons and guide them and the medical personnel involved and Chief Simmons' staff, health consultants and what they're willing to heal these bodies. And ask this from your end. All right, if y'all will join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. On the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, folks. The first thing that the citizens comment, Mr. Steinhegen, you are up first. Now, if you'll forgive me, I can't read all of your handwriting. I think it says design build, is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, Robert Steinhegen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. First want to say something about the unbelievable carnage that we've seen all over America against our nation's police officers. I think the actions, I think all of us agree that the actions of the mob, that is a group without a head, are uncalled for. Police lives absolutely matter. Mr. Short, thank you for your service as a police officer. While we disagree on many things, we can agree on one thing. I hope that you will keep safe and that you will consider your family first. Your life is too valuable. So, thank you for your service and to all those who wear the badge. The next issue that I just wanted to bring up, this is not a criticism, so please don't take it that way. I've sat where you are. The council has authorized the fire chief and the city administrator to move forward with design build. And just understand, I'm not, I have no expertise in contracting. From what I know about all of you, neither do you. I've had one client that has, we have done a design build for an elementary school, for a Christian school, and I can tell you that the cost overruns were significant. The question that I would just simply say, and based upon what you were asking last meeting, is I'm not sure exactly what is meant by design build. Based upon my understanding, design build means a lot of different things. What I would ask and hope that you will consider is asking some deeper questions to better understand exactly what is meant by design build, just to ensure that cost overruns are not the trend. And just out of, from talking with people who do contract work and this kind of thing, most of them that I talk to, and again, this is not empirical data by any stretch, but the two individuals that I spoke to who do big work, both of them said that design builds are typically, find themselves in cost overruns. It's not always true, but that I thought you would want to hear a different perspective so you can ask more probing questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, before we move into tonight's discussion, we're going to work a little differently than our usual meetings. Councilmember Bloom, if everything's working correctly, will be joining us through Zoom. One of our service providers will also be participating through that. And then, given technology works correctly, sometimes we can't always get that. Tonight's meeting's a work session, so there won't be any action tonight. It's just going to be a lot of information, discussion, and opportunity for council to ask questions. There will be no expectation tonight for the council to provide opinions on approval as presented, or even with changes, though councils welcome to make comments and staff will note, any comments and suggestions made tonight. The staff and myself will work together to bring a recommended balanced budget. The intent for tonight is for us not to be here all night. This is the very first work session of this year's budget. I'm hoping to get everybody out of here before nine o'clock. But we are not looking at a tax increase over the voter approval rate. There's no need for us to rush on the budget. We're not faced with having to adopt a budget early. There's going to be plenty of time for us to address anything that the council wishes to discuss. Discuss, excuse me. And if we don't get anything done tonight, as we've done in the past, we'll have additional budget meetings. Budget's usually not done, and why not? Not when we have council to discuss it and, you know, look at different insights into what's going on with that budget. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lisa.
I'll provide just a brief overview of kind of the expectations for tonight. I believe all of you met our accountant, Ray Smith, last year. I've invited Ray here tonight to help me present some information to you and to help me answer questions as we move along. Together, we're going to be listening for your feedback, and we'll make adjustments accordingly to have ready for you the next time we meet. So, we'll be updating this kind of through a process. There's a lot of information in your packet, and my intent tonight is to provide you with staff's recommended budget. This is just a starting place. The budget worksheet at the end of the agenda, item 4.9, is staff's recommended budget based on the current information available, and it assumes a tax rate of 15 cents. Final numbers for ad valorem revenue will not be available after Rockwell CAD provides the certified property values in late July. So, what we're working from here are estimates at the moment, our best estimates. Staff will also continue to update the fiscal year-end projections as monthly budget reports are available. So, we only have, you know, part of a year history to work with right now. Although the numbers will change somewhat as firm costs become available, there's enough surplus built into this budget that, I won't say any cost increases, but most increases that you can think of could be absorbed by that surplus that's built in. So, certain assumptions have been built into the recommended budget. And Mayor, did you go over those? I was doing technical things. Did you go over that slide with the assumptions?
I did not.
Okay. Did you want to do that, or would you like me to?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So, there are certain assumptions in the budget. Can you pull up that slide? Give us one moment. Okay. All right, so this budget assumes an adoption of a 15 cent tax rate. The effective rate, that's what they called it last year, now it's got a no new tax rate is a new name for it, is actually 15.7 cents. So, this proposed budget actually represents a small decrease in the tax rate. This assumes the certified property values, the estimates that we were provided are correct. It assumes conservative revenue projections, worst-case expenditure projections. It covers a safer grant decrease from 252,000 down to 117,000. It covers a new code enforcement position. It covers a whole service animal control contract. It covers a new fire command vehicle, assuming that the current fire command vehicle could be repurposed for the code officer. It covers a 3% to 5% salary merit increases and increases the TMRS, the city's retirement program, increases the rate contribution and matching ratio, which we'll go over in a minute. It covers an updated comprehensive plan, and it covers kind of just normal projected increases to usual and operating expenses. So, that's just kind of a general overview. So, each item on the agenda, 4.1 to 4.6, I know the agenda is really long. I think most of these items will kind of go through fairly quickly, but each one of those items represents a number in the budget that council may or may not wish to fund because it represents some kind of change. So, staff needs feedback on these items in order to provide the most accurate budget information as we move forward. Other amounts of the budget are based on known expenditures or revenues, or there's something that may be contracted that we just know it's going to go up 3% or 5%, things like our dispatch contract, or our radio maintenance, or Infomark, who's our sewer provider. Other things built in, I mentioned the projections for the worst-case scenario expenditures, and then the just usual and ordinary operating expenses. All right, so one more slide, just kind of an overview here, so we kind of just know where we're going to end up in the end. So, if you kind of glance up here, you're going to see the first column there is the fiscal year 2019-20, as-approved budget, the budget year that we're in. And if you look down there, that was at $1,306,000. General fund expenses were expected to be $1,40,000, and it left a surplus of $265,000. That's what we budgeted for the current year. This projected fiscal year end, so this is where we think we're going to be, that middle column, is where we think we're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year, assuming trends continue. So, if you look at that and you look at that bottom number, we've done really, really well. Our billiards permits have exceeded all expectations this year, our sales taxes up, and as a result of that, if you look at that number, it's 932,000. That's our projected year-end surplus for this budget year, which puts us in a great position. The proposed budget that we'll talk about tonight, that is $1.6 million, and the surplus left from that is $399,000, so about $400,000 surplus. All of this assumes a 15 cent tax rate. If we were to use the effective rate, it's called the no new tax rate, it would actually produce an additional $32,000. And then, you've got a couple of other assumptions down at the bottom of that slide, where if you went up 3.5% over what's here, you'd end up with an additional $53,000, and then we can kind of project additional income from that, but I don't think we'll need to go any higher than that. So, as we're moving through here and we're talking about all these new expenses, I just wanted people to realize that all of those assumptions are built into this projected budget, so you know what you have to start with to work from. And are there any questions before we kind of go to the first item? Infomark, I'm going to get him zoomed in. Infomark is the city's sewer service operating and maintenance provider. Cameron Robinson is our account manager. He approached me a few months ago about wanting some upgrades to the system. So, he is going to be here in just a moment, or at least he's going to show up here on Zoom, and he's got a little presentation to make about some requests that he'd like to do, some upgrades. Bear with us a minute.
Hey, do you want to show up your video and unmute?
When was the last time you updated?
2015. We adopted it in early 2016, but it was the 2015 plan.
Is that on it? Okay. Much better. So, go ahead and get started. So, about the Flitzen system, what it is, it's a cellular remote monitoring system. What this does will allow us to monitor the pumps, alarm calls going on at the lift stations for the city. Currently, I've been sitting as auto dialers set up inside of the lift stations, but they require phone lines, and at this time, a phone line is not going to run with the stations.
Can you pause for a second?
Yes.
Can everybody hear him?
Yes.
There's a little bit of an echo. Can you all hear him? Can you all hear? I'm not sure if we can get it any better. He's going to go through a PowerPoint, and it's also in your, I actually printed that out this afternoon, so you can kind of follow along if you miss a word or two. Let me just go ahead and continue. Okay, Cameron, just go ahead and continue. We'll just try to listen carefully.
So, with the Flitzen monitoring system, again, there's a cellular system which will allow us to remotely monitor the lift stations. We can do this from a mobile app. Also, the city can be able to look at this as well. It gives us a detailed map. It also lets us know any alarm calls, and it will tell us exactly what's going on before we actually make it to the facility. A typical auto dialer will call us and say that there is a high level, for example, a high level in the wet wheel, or there is a pump failure in the middle of a storm at 2:00 in the morning. With the Flitzen system, we'd be able to get the same alarm call, but we will also be able to look up exactly what pump is going down, what might be along with it, if we need to bring an electrician out with us, if we need to bring a truck to actually pull a pump. It tells us exactly what would be going on. It comes with a detailed map that'll show us exactly where it's located. This is an example of some of the details, where it'll tell you whether it's pump number one, pump number two, it can tell you the signal strength, if we have power going to the facility, if we don't. We're also able to see the pump runs. This is all information that would come in handy if you were looking at going up pump rehab, if there was an engineer needing some additional information, or if you're looking at the history of the lift station itself. Again, currently, the lift station does not have an auto dialer due to the phone line that is needed, and this would be a cellular system. I can go into as much detail of this as you wish, but on a high level, this would save a lot of money in the long run. There is a charge for the install and the purchasing of the Flitzen, where about five grand. And you would need it at both facilities. With that, with a little service fee, it's waived for the first year. So, you wouldn't pay that until the second year. The second year, it's about $600 annually for the service, for it to be hosted cellularly and for the website hosting. If there's any questions, I can go more in detail with it, but I know it's probably hard to hear me as well.
Okay, Cameron, so we're looking at a $10,000 initial cost, is that correct?
Yes, for the install and the purchase of the system.
And then, how are we currently monitoring it?
So, currently, the auto dialer is mobile and hooked up into the phone line. We're looking into it, like Nelson, exactly what happened at both lift stations and at the second lift station, number two, it seems that the phone line is non-existent. So, at the moment, we're having to have someone manually check the lift station.
Or are we wait till we hear that there's a problem and then you have to go and check it out?
Yes, which is what we don't want to do.
No, Lisa, and I know you're trying to hear this. I understand the initial cost of $10,000, and then I also understand the secondary cost of $600 per year after that for a lift station. How many lift stations are we talking about?
It's two, is that correct, right, Cameron?
Two lift stations.
Yes, we have two lift stations now. If there's a question, I'm sorry, I can't hear it.
He was just asking, is it 1,200? It would be 1,200 total per year after that initial year?
Yes.
Is that just to, is it like a subscription, or what does the $600 per lift station get us after that?
So, for that $600, it is to host the auto dialer itself over the cellular system, also for the hosting on the website to be able to view all the information, which is the same charge you would get from if you had the utility to do the monitoring or had a crystal ball system or an auto dialer, they still have a monthly subscription fee to do the call out.
So, basically, cell service and website hosting?
Yes.
Yes, it'll give them, my understanding is that this will give them up-to-date information immediately, so they can check the system anytime.
And with this as well, it would help us move towards predictive maintenance, where we can actually look at the runtime in live action to see maybe one pump has been running for 13 hours, we know exactly something's wrong, rather than waiting for one of our techs to kind of check it the next morning, or Monday or Wednesday to see, okay, this ran for the last 13 hours, why did not switch over? So, we could then have any actual major failures in the future.
I know I did receive one call from the developer, I think it was, not too long ago, and it was late at night, and I guess they had been notified by Encore that there was a power failure in the pump. Then, they discovered after a long period of time, they'd been running, and they weren't sure how long. So, that would come in that scenario, is that correct?
Yes.
What it boils down to, if I understand it right, basically, it's updated technology where they can monitor it, somebody to physically be there to see if it fails, or if the little signal light goes off, they can do it remotely like this, where it's constantly looking at it and checking it. And if something goes wrong, it goes, hey, we got a problem.
Can you hear, Cameron?
No, I can't. Apologies.
So, quick question. Can you hear me now, sir? Sorry, quick question. So, installation of this technology, does it prolong the life of the pump stations? Is there any evidence to say that it'll last another year or two because of doing this, or no?
No, so this would be separate from the actual pumps or anything within the station. It will allow us to keep everything monitored to prevent something from happening to any of the equipment, and also to predict if we need to see something slowing down, also looking at manufacturing, basically say, hey, this is reaching its life expectancy, but by putting this in, no, it wouldn't extend the life of anything in the plant currently.
And one other question, sir. So, as far as the $600 per lift station per year, what incremental increase can we expect as a city? Is that going to go up?
At this time, we have a, yeah, so this one, no, at this time, we don't see any increases from it. This is a deal, Infomark was able to work out with the manufacturer of the Flitzen system to waive everything for the first year. If the rates increase, it's a complete pass-through to the district, there's no markup or anything like that from us for the service. If you guys choose to move on from us, the Flitzen system will still be yours, as well as a subscription to give to a new operator as well. So, there's no charges from us on the increase side.
What happens when technology changes and upgrades? Who takes care of that?
So, this is probably on the cutting edge of the technology that everyone is typically moving through, because it's a lot cheaper than having a SCADA system, which can get up there, it can get into around $30,000 to $50,000, depending on what are you trying to do. This is a simpler version of that, it's just the same thing, and if any kind of upgrades are needed, then it would be more of a software update, not a update with us having to install a new system.
Another question, sir. So, if we don't utilize this technology, how would it affect the folks that are on those pump stations?
So, currently, if we don't move forward with this one, we would have to get the manufacturer of the current auto dialer out there to see exactly what's going on with the current models that are in there, and also get with the phone company to see what happened to the lines that currently go to the auto dialer and possibly get them to run new lines. I'm not exactly sure of that cost at this moment in time, I can't find out, but you will need some type of auto dialer out there and for emergencies and everyone to know what's going on to avoid any kind of compliance issues. We typically use this one because it's an alternative where it costs just as much as a typical auto dialer, but you get a bit more with it.
If I understand what you're explaining, is the current system has its share of errors, which is not always giving them the information in a timely manner? Now, your first question is, does it extend the life of a pump station? We don't know. What it does is it speeds up their ability to know there's a problem, and Lisa referenced it very well. There was a time when Encore discovered it before the sewer guys even knew it was a problem. They discovered it and made a phone call because the information wasn't being transmitted saying there was a problem with the pump stations. What this does is this gives them more real-time data that there could be an issue.
Cameron, did you hear that question?
No, apologies.
Helen Claude has asked, how often the system is checked now?
Uh, was this?
Do we look at it every day, or once a week, or how does that work?
So, we physically send a operator out Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of each week to check the lift station. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, there is a system out there that gives us the same data we're going to check for.
If I understand that, I mean, like physically go out there and get that information?
When they're out there, they use what we call a bird nest system, which they upload the pump run times, the times that they're out there, any kind of calculated readings, with a few more, a bit more information that's needed, but they're only out there, say, maybe one to two hours to do it. out there, say, maybe one to two hours to do a facility check, um, but throughout the nights and on weekends, uh, we are not out there with cases where the auto dialer system would come in, um, we're required to have some form of auto dialer out there to, um, prevent any compliance issues or, uh, high wet, uh, wet well level where you would have actual sewer running on the ground, um, which would have to be put to T T Q, so you would need some type of auto dialer there to prevent that from happening.
And one lift station does not have any auto dialers, is that correct?
Uh, it has an auto dialer in there, there is no phone line included, so you couldn't call it out, uh, if there was a defect that happened.
Hey Lisa?
Yes.
Um, before we, before we have that item actually brought to us where we have to make a decision on it, I'd like to see the costs in getting the auto dialer system that we currently have working again, so that way we could make the best decision on that as far as, because if we, there's already an auto dialer system there for emergency purposes, um, what the cost would be to repair that system and its, and its annual operational costs versus this new system before we make a decision on that, is what I would like, please.
I think we can work on that.
Add to that specific information is asking to what the longevity of that dialer, you know, if, if it's gonna cost us to fix it, is it gonna be something that, the way technology's changing, there'll be something that's gonna be an antique within another year or two, um, versus looking at new technology? Because I understand what this does, but I also understand the auto dialer...
I'm sorry, if there's any more questions, I'm not able to hear them at this time.
Right, anything else you can add?
So just, the best back from, the best way to get it is the auto dialer, if the auto dialer is repaired, what the cost is, but is it feasible for us to repair it, or it's gonna last us for a while, or is it something that, you know, eighteen months from now, we're gonna have to change anyways?
I think I understand the question, I can get with Cameron after that. Uh, can you pull up the, just one, uh, can you keep Cameron on?
Lisa, I've got one more question, sorry.
No, go ahead, guys, it's...
If, if the existing, uh, lift station goes out completely, are there any transfer fees to move this technology to a new pump station?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If you're into a new pump station, is there a transfer fee?
Oh, I see what you're saying, uh, okay, so Cameron, if, if we have a new pump station, new lift station, will this new equipment, this new technology, will that transfer, or do we have to have another one installed, or how does that work?
So if you were getting rid of one lift station, and say you're building a new one, then we could, um, use the same equipment, uh, depending on, um, all of the connections, but if there was a third one to come online, you were keeping the existing two, you would need a new system.
I'm sorry, did he say would need a new system?
But also, if you were going to expand the current lift station, you'd be able to just build off of what you currently, what you would have here.
I think I can kinda compile all that...
Okay, that's fine.
...and bring that back to you.
Okay.
All right, Cameron, do you have another minute to kinda talk about the requested road repair and the pump repair?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, um, so council's looking at a couple of pictures right now of the road, uh, leading to one of the lift stations, and it looks like it needs, were you wanting to just put rock on that, or did you need asphalt, or what were you...
Yes, so typically, what we would do would throw gravel, um, in the place up there, unless you wanted us to look at possibly using more of a flex base or getting a quote, uh, from other contractors to see what they could do to make it last longer, um, what we're having an issue with right now is as our operators and techs or even our subcontractors go out there, they're either getting stuck, um, or they're, um, hitting their bumpers as they try to avoid the current pose in the road.
You don't have any idea of the cost for that at this time?
Uh, no, but I can compile that all together and probably send it out this week.
That would be helpful.
All right.
All right, can you talk about the, the needed pump repair and the installation and the costs?
All right, so the, um, one of the lift stations, well, lift station number one, um, one of the pumps went out, uh, from our investigation, also having, uh, our vendor look at it, um, there seems to be a wiring issue that occurred, um, the cable was damaged, uh, it may have, in a lack of better words, broke up, which called the, the pump to be damaged, and the motor itself, um, this could have happened during the time of the Encore incident, um, at one of our other facilities that were a few brownouts that caused the same issue with one of our other pumps, um, but currently, in order to keep the lift station going and be able to operate and not just use one pump for however many hours, which is not recommended, uh, the repair of the motor and the pump will be sixty-seven hundred dollars, and for the labor and for the crane truck and mobilizing from the vendor comes out to about fourteen hundred dollars, so we're looking at an eight thousand dollar repair for one of the pumps, um, we looked at repairing and we also looked at, um, replacement, to replace one of these pumps is about thirty thousand dollars, and we're able to give the recommendation that repairing it will be sufficient.
Any questions for Cameron on those expenses?
So right now, my understanding that we're only on one pump station and that the other one's non, so station one is non-functional?
So, uh, the question is, are we just down to one pump?
In that whole lift station, yes.
That's not good.
Okay, Cameron, would it be, um, I originally thought we were gonna maybe consider funding this out of the new budget, which would be in October, but, um, it sounds like maybe some of this maintenance needs to be done sooner rather than later, um, is that, do you think that's the case?
Yes, um, yes, because, uh, with this, we'll be operating outside of the manufacturer's recommendations, um, we have been able to get by while diagnosing the issue, but we do recommend going ahead and take care of it if possible.
All right, um, I spoke to Ray earlier today and we kind of talked that maybe it makes more sense to actually fund this out of this year's, um, utility fund balance and go ahead and get this repaired done so that we don't have any additional issues and so that we know that that system is gonna work the way it needs to work and they can finance it. Cameron, does the repair, does it come with any kind of a warranty, or do you know how long it might last after that, or needs additional work, or is that just a, we just don't know?
Um, there won't be a warranty, uh, with it, if it was a replacement, we would be able to argue for one, um, with this, um, typically after a motor and pump is repaired, what we call a rebuild, they take it up completely apart and they put it back together, replacing any kind of damaged parts, um, we typically don't see any other issues, but we can't say exactly how long it would last or if something else would happen to it, uh, we're replacing the motor, or rebuilding the motor and the pump itself, the impeller, the cord, um, there's a variety of other things that could happen that we can't speak for, but we don't perceive anything else happening, um, from our diagnosis.
Lisa, what's the average lifespan of one of these pump stations? Cause I mean, these are seven years old?
Cameron, what is the average lifespan of a pump?
Average lifespan, we're looking at for a brand-new pump, just going in about twenty years maybe?
Okay.
What'd you say?
We got one that already needs to be repaired as well.
Right.
Hey Lisa, I got a question, he said that he had, uh, another client that had a similar brownout scenario where they lost a pump as well to a Encore incident, um, A, did they, did they have a recording when that incident happened and did that incident, one of those Encore incidents caused that pump to fail, and B, if so, is it possible for us to make a claim to Encore to recover the cost of its replacement?
Uh, Cameron, uh, the question is, is there any chance that the Encore failure caused this pump to be damaged or caused a problem with it?
We can't say no, um, but we also don't have enough, uh, evidence to say, yes, this is exactly what caused it, um, we don't know for sure, um, but we can assume, but we don't have enough information to ask them if they could, uh, pay for the repair, um, or hold them accountable for anything, uh, done with it.
Do you know if there's history of, of other, um, systems that you've monitored and do you know if there's ever been a history of, you know, a power failure that caused these types of issues?
Um, yes, some deal with power failures, some deal with, uh, lightning striking from certain storms, um, other things could happen with the, um, auto dialer's failure, um, or with possibly, uh, the most recent we had, I believe, was a, the rolling brownouts that caused one of our, um, pumps at a water plant to actually, uh, burn up once the auto dialer and, um, some of the, uh, electronics in the MCC building actually broke up as well, um, so there's, there's history of it, um, but we can't say exactly if Encore was, Encore was the cause.
Thank you.
Cause that picture, if I understand what I'm looking at right there, that picture is right there before the bridge. That...
Can you turn on the communication, I'm gonna have to turn on the...
Mr. Bloom, I think.
So, you know, it's about a two-hundred yard road, maybe, and I've seen it, it does work pretty bad at times.
Cameron, is there a, there's a battery backup system, is that correct, or is it a generator?
We have a generator.
A generator, but it only lasts so long, right?
Yes.
And it would only go so many hours?
Um, it would give us probably four nights, um, but we don't recommend running it full-time.
Is there a battery backup that can bridge the time between the power outage and the generator kicking in?
Uh, usually the generator kicks in, we test it annually, um, as well as when we go out to do, uh, facility checks, it kicks in fairly quickly where you wouldn't have any, uh, issues waiting on it to come on. But we can explore options to look for additional battery or generator if needed.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I understand what he's saying about the pump repair and pump install, the manhole repair, what, why is there need to repair that?
Can you address the manhole repair, Cameron?
Yes, so with the manhole repair, we actually got a call from a home builder, uh, their plumber, um, was trying to find some issues and ended up, ended up cameraing the line and they thought, uh, there was actually damage to the main, uh, once we came out and cameraed it as well, we saw there was no issue to the main, but there is a false bottom in one of the manholes, um, this would have had to be, been completed during the original install, um, we don't know exactly, um, who installed it or what reason, um, there was for doing it this way, um, but to repair it, to get everything in proper order, that estimate came in to be fifteen hundred dollars. Also, the customer isn't experiencing any issues now, um, but it was more of a concern from them as well, knowing that this was near their residence.
What's a physical, what's, what's a physical problem with manhole cover?
It's the false bottom.
It's a false bottom.
Which I assume that it's just not normal. Can you, can you explain the false bottom a little bit, Cameron?
Um, so with this manhole, uh, typically you'll have a opening in the bottom, um, where you can see straight down, you can see the water flowing, um, with this one, um, around the sides, uh, wasn't properly sealed, I would say, and also, um, there wasn't, there was a, a brick, I believe, a piece of a brick that was in the line that the plumber was able to flush out, and usually something like that would go through, um, and we'll be able to get it from the manhole, um, I wish I had some pictures, I apologize, it would have been easier to explain, but that is what actually allowed us to see that this bottom isn't properly sealed, is what we mean.
Yeah, who was the, who was the installer that put that in? If it was done improperly, we're just now discovering it.
I'd have to go back and, and research you put that in, um...
Also, which phase it's in?
Yeah, if it's in phase one, it may have been so many years ago that we might not be able to make any kind of claims, but I can check on that. We spent kind of a lot of time on this one, do we want to, we all can get some answers and compile some information and bring that back to you?
I, I think we need the information before we make any kind of...
Sure, yeah, I didn't expect you to make a decision or, or even a, a direction tonight, I just thought we'd just get our questions answered. Anything else for Cameron before we let him go?
I think you did very well, I mean, it was, we had a little bit of echo there, but I think you did very well.
All right, thank you, Cameron, I'll be with you tomorrow.
All right, thank you, I'll have a great night.
You wanna move on to number four? All right, yeah, this is, let's get our slide up here. So, on to, uh, technology news, um, I think the iPads maybe have outlived their usefulness, they seem to be more of a pain in the neck than they are useful, um, so I'm wondering if council would maybe like to consider going to laptops, and I have Bill here, here, because he can actually maybe talk to you about what some of those might cost and some options. And then the other issue related to technology is, um, our system here, all of this, from the monitors on the wall, it's all kind of piecemeal. Jim Bloom states that he can... Stand by, Monex.
Jim, can you hear us?
Yeah, we're not muted.
Do you need to get him on the phone?
No, he can hear the other guy. Yeah, he can hear us all, our caller.
I'm calling, see if we can get him on like we did Cameron.
Lisa?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, so I just put on speakerphone.
Yes, we'll do our best to see if we can get you on here.
Okay, very good, yeah, thank you, yes.
Okay, all right, so for technology, uh...
Technology, I was just talking about the iPad.
I've kinda given us more grief. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, mute?
Better? So we were talking about, uh, possibly moving council to laptops, uh, that would be more useful and maybe give us less problems, and then, uh, at some point, I would like to bring in, there's no, no cost associated with this at this point, but at some time this year, I'd kinda like to have our equipment evaluated to see if we can't maybe get it all to work, including episodes like this when we need to remote somebody in, and see if we can't get all of this to kinda coordinate a little bit better, um, but I'm gonna let Bill talk about maybe some options for council as far as technology.
You go.
You go.
I'm on with him right there.
Hey, Lisa? Is on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
She had asked about switching from the iPads to maybe a laptop similar to something like this, or maybe a Microsoft Surface. They've got their Surface Go's, which are 10.1 inch screen. You can get them with regular keyboards that attach to them. They get about seven hours of battery life. Not super high end, but their price, you can get those in the $800 range to replace your lap, your iPads. The iPads you have, I believe, are around $600 to $800 range as well. But the benefit is, it's, it's like using a regular computer with Windows like you're used to using, and it ties into your Office 365 accounts, so you're not adding any additional cost for your Microsoft licensing. So, they're, I think they weigh about a pound and a half each, so they're, they're compact. These right here are educational series laptops. They're bulky, but they work pretty well. And they, they usually run around $500 for these type of laptops. So they are a little bit cheaper, but.
Isn't that what y'all just rebuilt for me? Is that Surface Pro Go that I use as an MDT in my vehicle out there now?
Yeah, maybe.
It's the same concept, so I actually have one that you can see if you want to check. We have my vehicle.
That was only $500?
Yeah, these are about $500. They weigh about three and a half pounds, and the battery life on them is around three hours. Most of the time, you're not using them for that long. It just depends on how your sessions run.
What's, what's the pros and cons? I mean, I understand, a little bit bulkier, a little bit more weight, a little less battery, but as far as functionality?
They're functionality's similar. Really what you're paying for is the lightweight, a little bit better screen resolution. Those are the full 1920 resolution. These are 720 resolution. But other than that, there's not much difference. If you advise like mine, it's hard to tell the difference between 720 and 1080 unless you're watching certain videos. So.
Well, we basically use these for word processing and email and, you know, we're not, we're not watching movies or anything.
We need to live with replacing and one of the other.
It's very difficult to use that item.
Well, when somebody leaves, the iPads are, we've had to ship them off to Apple to get them unlocked, to where we can actually do anything with them. And this last one, we sent it off two days after we received it, because we couldn't get through it. And we got it back yesterday. That was, I think, back in the, middle of April that we got that. So.
So, do we have a place over in the budget for that?
Um, Ray, did we, we budgeted, was it 800? Did we put that in the budget? Remind me.
Yes, we had that extra line.
So we built it into the budget, the proposed budget. We went ahead and I estimated just $800, so we put that in there per council member.
Eight per, you said per?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that is built into that proposed budget, because I assume that.
Office equipped?
I don't even use the iPad and it's frustrating for me.
Yes, I would like to stay with what I have.
You like what you have?
I like what I have.
Do you have a city?
No.
Oh, my personal. Well, that's no problem if you stayed over in your own.
No, I, I don't, I don't know that all of you would have to switch. I just wanted to offer you something besides those iPads, because I know they've been an issue.
Yeah, because I'm using my personal computer that's old. I've got a new computer. This thing is going to go away though.
The system that we do, everything is recorded no matter what device they use, is that correct? So we can always recall, we can always get to.
With the Office 365, yes, you can access it from anywhere. One other functionality that we'd like to get you guys using is the Teams functionality with Microsoft. That's where you can have access to groups of documents that you all have access to no matter where you are. You need to check in from your phone by logging into the account, the computer, all the information's there. You also have a whiteboard functionality with Teams where you can work on things at the same time.
Is there any way like we can learn how to do that? Because that is something that, I mean.
Yes.
That's why I use this, is because it's so easy for me and I get so frustrated the other ways. So if you can just.
I, I can see where that would be useful for staff, but are there any concerns about open meetings, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's what my concern is though. It would be the people here. So you can allow people into the documents and you can keep everybody else out.
It would still have to be a document that was already approved by the council.
Correct. Yeah, you're just.
It would be a working document, because we're not permitted to work on something like that with more than two people.
Right. It's just, say you want to have the meeting notes up on the screen. You can put those meeting notes up on the screen if you want to have, or like the PowerPoints that she's showing here. You can also have a group section where you can put notes in there that people can see. And you can, so you, maybe this person needs to ask, you know, ask a question, you can say, type it in there, it'll show up on her screen as you're typing the notes in. So it just gives you some more communication functionality with the documents that you're working with. So you're not using something outside of, outside of the city. You're just, just having other ways to access the information.
I like the idea of, of what you're saying, but the problem is the Open Meeting Act. We, we can't, we can't, I don't think we have the ability to do that. We'll have to have, have Halla take a look at that. But no more than two council members can work on a same item at any given time unless it's during session.
Yeah, it's more for the meetings aspect, that's all. So it would be what's showing up on the screen. So, does that make sense? It's, it's not where you're working on, everybody's putting together a document. It's just you have the information available.
Okay, so for instance, like the conversation we just had with Cameron, they could all add questions and I can take them back with me and then.
Correct.
Okay. I think I get where he's, he's going with that.
On the, the whiteboard feature, if somebody still.
They can still use it.
Against the.
Yeah, and we, when we have our morning meetings every morning, we have a meeting notes section. And we update that meeting notes section, everybody in our staff who has access can see our updates. So that way, everybody's on the same page. It just, just allows you to have that functionality where everybody can see what you're, what you're discussing. Not necessarily a project where you have the council members that are working on something, it's just where you're discussing in an open forum.
Any other questions for Bill?
I don't have any questions.
I would suggest maybe we just kind of think on that and see if you, how you feel with your device, if you're happy with it, not happy with it. And then we can kind of bring that back for more of the, you can kind of direct me the next time how you want to proceed with that.
And I, I believe that's item number 623 under office equipment, just to make a personal.
Was it, it's under capital, is that correct, Ray?
700.
Actually, I wanted to think, so.
700 said that's the infra mark request.
Is, is what Ray's using, is that one of the, is that, that's what he's using?
That's a standard surface. The Surface Go's a little bit smaller.
Okay.
Smaller screens, 10.2, which is the same size as the iPads.
Lisa, is there any issue at all with us using our personal?
I don't think so because of the Microsoft 365. So if I had an open records request, I think Bill can always find whatever he needs to find and pull off documents or emails or what have you. So I don't think so. I would have been more concerned about it a few years ago, but I think now, I've, I've had him in the past, you know, if I've had a request and it was a large request, to just go and pull all that information.
The data does need to be kept in the OneDrive folders, and that's usually set up. A lot of times it'll point to your documents folder. If you save the documents to your desktop and you're pulling it from there, those are not in the OneDrive. So, that's, when you bring up your folder list, you'll see there's a OneDrive section once you've signed in. One other benefit of Teams is the chat function. When you're using it, instead of using your cell phones to send text messages, you can use Teams to send messages to each other. And that also complies with the Open Records Act, because if you, somebody subpoenas your phone because they want to see your text messages, you know, if you show that our requirements are you use Teams to send all messages, then we just have to search Teams. You give us the search functionality and we can search Teams for that. And a lot of times, they don't take your phone.
Is, do you have a class to do all this? Or is there information to get this?
We'll be happy to help train on that. It's, it's really pretty straightforward. It's about two or three hours total time.
Would anybody be interested in learning all that? Or, I mean, if we're not going to use it, there's no reason for just one of us to go figure it all out and then nobody uses it.
We could probably schedule it during a meeting time or a workshop just before a meeting, or if we have a short meeting just after.
Lisa, do you think it would be helpful to use all of that?
I think it would be. So we can put something together for you that would benefit you. And I could actually pull it from a couple of people that work for other cities on what they've done.
What do you guys think?
Doesn't hurt.
I'm always ready for more computer training.
I can add something to that.
Yes, sir.
We transitioned in our firms to Teams and it's going on the way that we work.
Okay. Well, anything that would be very helpful, because it's, it seems very frustrating. And I hate doing anything just because, you know, I don't know if it's the right thing to do. I don't know where it goes. I don't know what it, you know. So I just don't even use anything. I just.
We eliminated all, we have a rule about that, that there is no inner office email. We need to communicate through Teams.
Okay.
If we want to share a document or an email document, we want to share it through Teams.
Okay. Yeah, I would love that. Oof, where'd my stuff go?
Hey, any technology that's going to make things easier for open records requests and streamline the process, then I'm in favor of it.
That definitely does. And the security aspect where you can have documents available for one group, but you may don't, may not want the administrative documents available or anything to do with pay or employment information, you want to keep that secure. So it gives you the ability to set permissions based on the user's, and you can even have one person maintain that. And what he said with email, if you're sending out an email and somebody compromises the email account, they have access to that information. Where it's in Teams, it's more difficult to gain access to that.
Anything else, or do we need to just go ahead and move on, or?
I think we can move forward right now.
Okay. This next item goes back to public safety planning, so I'm going to let Chief kind of take it from here. The reason this is on here, it does lead to a budget item, but we did have some questions after the last meeting about site location for the new station and also about that design build method. So I'm going to let Chief kind of go through and address some of those highlights, and then it'd give you an opportunity to ask me questions you have.
So as understood from the other night, there was kind of a few questions on how we came back to the location. And so, we've got a few PowerPoints here just to kind of bring you up to speed a little bit on why we've ended up where we are. Again, just to kind of let council know, closing documents have been signed for the fire station property. Tech dot actually owns the 2,600 square feet of dirt to 1250 State Highway 205. We have received the funds, the little over $4 million, four and a half million dollars, that has been placed into capital funded logic. Once we start the process with the station, then an account will be set up and, and all the funds for the fire station build will run through that account. So we'll keep that separate. RFQ for design build to the station, our goal is to get that out probably by the end of this week. We did talk to you last week and that our plans are to get that out by the end of this week. One of the, the criterias is, is talking, you know, I've talked with the mayor, I've talked with Lisa and a lot of conversations on about what's best for location, traffic, easability. And we've always, we've kind of bounced between three properties. We had a property on 205, actually fronted 205. We had a property that was at 205 and 550 area. So, and, and every time we started looking at those properties, obviously cost was involved with all of them. But then it came back to looking at, at future growth of, of the, of the city. And we always kept coming back to the City Hall property. It was originally done years ago to have it here, to build it here, and, and would assess the needs and, and figure out what's going to be best. So we, we looked at moving it to 205 and 550. And with the growth coming at, at 205 and 550 and the traffic that we know that we will have when, when State Highway 205 is expanded, we felt that it's just best to bring it back to the City Hall property. And so one of the reasons why we brought it back, if you go to next slide there. Four, three, there you go. Oh, back one. All right. So if you look at that slide there, we, we mapped out. So green is what we call exact center of the city now. Or you'll see, you may barely be able to see it, but just above the red, it's a little different color green. But if you look just above the red dot, that's what we call exact city, city center. And then you look at the red X, and the red X, red X is exact city or center of ETJ of all of our fire district. The yellow is the proposed station site. We're point, let me look at my notes real quick. City Hall site is .9 miles from city center and .3 miles from the ETJ center. Has adequate space and it's there for long-term needs. Also, you know, as the city grows, if we want to build a, a training facility out behind the property here, since we do, since the city does own the acreage here. 13 acres, correct? 12 acres? 15 or so acres. And again, there's, there's no cost. Between the two properties that we've had conversations with, with the home, or the property owners on, we were looking at anywhere from 300 to $500,000 to be able to purchase that land. Again, the city owns the property right across the street. And it also begins to start that city center complex with having new station one sitting right across the street. So that was a couple of the reasons why we came back. We knew that we would still be able to meet our requirements. We have ease of access to 550. We're not taking away from a corner that eventually as the city grows and, and development comes in, we wouldn't be taking away possibly tax base, you know, from the building being built there, commercial building or something. So, and we would be able to save money on, we have a certain amount of funds, as you see here, that we are going to use to build this station. And the goal is to, to build that station with those funds and then also be able to use whatever funds are remaining to purchase any other public safety equipment that we may need. Any questions on location?
Here's, here's a question I have for the chief. You know, and I understand the, the three different axes on there. What does that do to us? Does it do anything in relation to response time versus any kind of fire ratings and all that with the state for you as a fire department or with our city? Does, does where that current location we're proposing, which is right there, does it affect our response times anymore than what we would normally have? Does it affect any kind of ratings the department or the city gets?
I mean, as we sit now, affecting our response times out and out? No, we don't have a whole lot of growth going on. It's not much different than where we're located right now on the far outskirts of our city limits. We're, we're right on the edge pretty much where our existing station is now.
Does it improve our response?
So it actually helped us improve it a little bit, because now we get to what I call the, the main arteries and a, and a little quicker response time to be able to make that decision, you know, do we go north, southeast or west? In regards to trying to meet the requirements of NFPA 1710, this isn't going to affect us to where we're not going to, because we have those buffers in there to where we know that if we have that call up there off of, I think it's called Rockadeli, if we have that one call and our response time is a little bit longer than what's required, it's going to be in that percentile where, you know, we understand you can't build a station that's going to meet all your needs, you know, without building multiple stations at one time. So, moving it back here is not going to affect us. And I think, once we get ready to, once we get the station built and we get some things in play, we're going to look at contacting ISO for a regrade. No need to do it now. It's been, I think the last grading was done in 2012 maybe. I spoke with them, but there's really no need to do it right now until we get some of these other things done. And once we do that, then we'll call for a regrade. And I believe And I believe the station, the capabilities, and the location could assist us in the future.
All right. My next question, and I think it's going to lead into the rest of your explanation. And I think I'm going to get it right in the way I'm going to ask you. But the term "design build," can you go a little bit more into a better explanation for the audience? What does that truly mean, so there's no confusion for our citizens and the audience, or our audience as a whole?
Absolutely.
What that truly means and what, kind of what it is?
So, I've never built a fire station. And so, I've reached out to several friends of mine, gentlemen, their chiefs in other cities that have built numerous stations. One has built three stations, the other one has built two, and several other chiefs around Texas. And so, I had lots of questions for them. What are the benefits? Because we originally started this as going and the architect, hiring an architect, and then we would put out the bid to buy, to get a builder. And so, there's pros and cons to both of them. But having a conversation with several of these departments and looking at what's best for us, but due to the city size, and I got my notes here, if you don't mind, defined budget, limited staff, and build time constraints, it was determined that utilizing the design-build method is more efficient means for building. And so, rather than hiring an architect separately, because if we hire an architect, they're going to come in, they're going to design it, and then once we're done with design, at that point, then we have to put out for bid for a builder. But they, rather than hiring an architect and bidding out separately for construction, the design-build method allows the city to hire a firm that will design and construct the station. Additionally, firms that offer design-build services offer turnkey pricing. So, that's one of the advantages that speaking with some chiefs, that if you do a design-build, the advantage is getting a turnkey price. So, as we work with them, they're going to give us a price, we're going to give them kind of an idea of what we want, and they come back with a price of $300 a square foot. And that includes architect, that includes building of the building, and then furnishing the building, because that's what we're looking for is a turnkey. Somebody that will come in, that will design it, build it, and then furnish it. So, when we're ready to move in, we move the fire engines in, we're living, so we're ready to go. So, that was a big, in my opinion, was one of the big pluses in going towards the, going towards the design-build. It also allows for better cost control and generally saves time as well as money. The method will require the city engineers, building official, and myself to provide project construction oversight. So, again, as to Mr. Steinig stated, that is one of the things that was talked. You've got to be careful of those...
Cost overrides.
Cost overrides. And one advantage that everybody came back to the same, you know, one of the pros is you're going to get a turnkey price. So, several of the companies that, a couple of the chiefs I've worked with, a lot of times when they were done on a design-build, I mean, they were, they ended up getting money back to the city because the costs came in below their guaranteed price. So, that's another pro. Not saying that that will happen, but that's a possibility.
So, with this RFQ, will we be able to ask for a do-not-exceed price? As when you say turnkey, we're going to get a turnkey price, but to guarantee it doesn't go over budget on the design-build, will we have the ability to get a not-to-exceed price as well?
We were going to put terms in there to that effect. Some of the firms, when we just reached out and we just asked various questions to some of these places, just kind of trying to do our research to even write the RFQ, if we did not do the design-build, if we just did the traditional method, we were looking at a contingency fee of 20% to 25%, which is huge. If we do design-build, it's usually 5% or less.
I'm sure less.
We felt a lot more comfortable with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I go back to a location question?
Yes, ma'am.
It's, the station location is going to be in a residential area. I mean, we've got Chapel Hill right across the street. How do you make allocations for that when a fire station is, and you get a call that's at 11:00 at night or whatever? Do you run the sirens right away? How does that work? How are we going to...
So, you're using 11:00 PM at night, or 2:00 AM or whatever. Well, you know, if it's middle of the night, we jump out on the call. It's nothing against the guys for turning the sirens on and wiggling down the road from get-go, because that's the law. Do we kick the lights on when we're in a residential neighborhood and not bump sirens? Absolutely. You know, our goal is not to wake everybody up in the neighborhood, even though we're awake. So, we're very cautious and very aware of our citizens within our community. When we go into snow averting in the middle of the night, sirens, once we get off the main thoroughfare and into the subdivision, we bump a lot of the sirens down and we keep the lights on till we get on the signal. But in your case, where this neighborhood is down this main thoroughfare in the middle of the night, you know, you might hear them a little bit as they come through there, because the law requires if we're running code, it's lights and sirens. And we used to have a code one, code two, code three. Those are gone. We have code one and code three. If you've got lights on, then you need to have outlets on as well.
So, the sirens are...
Depends. We, that's the law.
Right.
In the neighborhood, I'm not, the guys know, to our citizens, I'm not going to drive by your house and call 2:00 in the morning with the airborne going and the Q2 and the woo-woo's going to wake you up. Woo-woo's for purpose. Now, during the day, you're going to hear it. And traffic, and the big thing is traffic. That's going to be the big thing. Light traffic, will we need to listen to that, because it drives us nuts, too?
Chief has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, just a quick question for you, Chief, regarding the design-build. Obviously, they're going to have like an in-house architect or draftsman, or can you, so are they a licensed architect?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They'll have a licensed architect on staff, and then they also have facilities to turn around and do the build as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, I know in what I've seen with the slides saying, planning, short-term, long-term, I know there have been some residents that have kind of questioned, based on the last city council meeting, and a little bit of the information about the station and the building and all that.
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify for our citizens and for our audience that what you mean by the long-term, what we are trying to do with the station? Because the station's going to be here for the city for quite some time. It's got to meet the needs of this city as the city grows for quite some time. What the projected possible uses within that building are? That does not necessarily mean that that's set in stone at this point in time.
Absolutely. So, as you know, the goal is to build a 30-plus-year fire station. That's what we're looking at. So, that's going to last the city 30-plus years. And so, looking at building the station and knowing this community, knowing what we have and what we don't have, and when I talked about the public safety side of it, Department of Public Safety side of it, public safety is everything that falls under that, whether it's code enforcement having an office there, or if it's building, having an office there that whether you as council, or whatever council makes that decision to have law enforcement, having an office there that they could utilize. Or if council decides to do the public safety route, the Department of Public Safety route, where you have triple-certified individuals, we want to make sure that that city, that station, has the ability to utilize those, the area, to where you don't have to build a separate building. And I say that from experience and with another city. When I went there, it was a, this new station was built for fire department only. And when the city made the decision to go to public safety route, we had to jump through hoops and try and figure out ways to build evidence rooms and lockers and patrol rooms. And so, it costs the city some money for us to be able to set everything up to be able to utilize it as a Department of Public Safety facility. So, and I don't want the city to have to do that, whether it's a year from now, or two years from now, or whatever it may be. I want to be able to go ahead and build it and have the space there, and have the rooms there to where, when this city, and you as council, wherever the council may be, decides to make those decisions, you have a facility there that will house those people.
So, it has the ability for the growth for the future?
Correct, absolutely.
Doesn't mean you have to fund it now, or three years, or five years, or ever. But designing it smartly is kind of, we just think, you know, we want to get the most out of every penny that we can.
And again, the big thing was previous experience, knowing how difficult it was, when the decision was made to be able to have the things that were required by TCO inside your control facility, controlled access, your evidence drop-off to your primary evidence room, you know, ventilated control. So, to build those things in now, and all that stuff has already been put in there to prepare it. Now, it would be closets, or they would be a watchroom, or, you know, just a workroom, if you want to call it. So, it's not going to be wasted space, a space that we will utilize now, and until this city or this council decides to make changes in whatever form or fashion they want in the future. So, we have enough to now, let's build it now. Not build it now, and then six months, one year, six years from now, decision's made to do it, and you're going, where are we going to put these? How do we do this, though?
Because I have to do my own research, because that's just the way I am. When I looked at public safety departments and why they don't work in a lot of places, one of the reasons is facilities. So, a lot of times, most of the time, police departments are established first before fire department, before a full-time fire department. So, if you've got a full-time police facility built first, it's not going to accommodate fire. And then, you know, so trying to combine two separate departments into one is harder than if you establish it from scratch to accommodate both. So, the idea was that, you know, we just have this unique opportunity and a pot of funds to use where we can start from scratch, and we feel like this building is going to be $10,000 to $12,000 square feet.
$10,000 to $12,000.
Right in there. That's the numbers we're putting in the RFQ, is $10,000 to $12,000 square feet. We feel that's enough space to design for both uses.
And I love that EMS, that also includes EMS, you know, that is speaking with EMS that we build is to hopefully, you know, give an office.
And Chief, right here, a quick question for you. Yeah, sorry. I actually have my microphone on for a change. So, let's say that we scaled this thing back, only did a fire department, and it cost $1.8 million of the $4.5 million that we have available. What happens to that money that has been granted to us? Does it go back to the state?
And these are we spent on public safety.
Okay. So, again, my point is, we're going to use these funds anyways. It's not from, we as city taxpayers, it's not from our city tax dollars that is going towards funding this structure. It's a grant from the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's for public safety purposes.
It's not a grant.
It's not a grant.
It's not a grant.
I think it's not a grant.
It's not a grant.
Oh.
They purchased, so when they, when Tech Dot, when they started having all the conversations and why, Tech Dot realized during their assessment of 205, that why didn't State Highway to where they, to the new design, six lane, with divided four use in the beginning, that there was going to wipe out our duty hut, as we call it, that's the quarters, the restrooms, the liver and the vendors, that it was going to wipe it out completely. So, when they realized that, they hired a company to come in and do an assessment of our department, along with our equipment. So, they were required, they were hired to come in and assess the need to this department because, you know, in their mind, I guess, we can stay there, but since they're taken out, they've got to be able to supply something to be able to build us something to move to.
Okay.
So, they hired a company to come out and do a full assessment. And off that full assessment of the new future fire station, because they didn't have, they had to build it for now and the future. That's why it went from a little red building to a little, you know, story building to what we're looking at, to a $12,000 square foot building.
Okay.
They did the assessment and said, based on your equipment you have now and your future needs, here's what Tech Dot recommends, or this company recommended to Tech Dot for them to come up with funding based off this model.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's just state, again, you're only going to use $1.8 million, whatever. The rest of that, can you buy fire trucks, or anything like that?
Correct.
You can.
Yes, ma'am. That's why...
So, we don't have to throw all of it into a building that we may not use for a little while, or, you know, make it so large?
Throwing a lot of it into a building that's not, that's being built for 30-plus years. Not for today, not for just a year from now, but for 30-plus years. So, we're building it for future.
But what I was trying to get at is, why have such a large building and our trucks and things like that are not up to par with a large, beautiful building? In other words...
Because if you build a building too small today, and I'll speak from what I'm seeing with some of the construction, and I'm going to use hypothetical numbers. Yesterday, it was $10 a yard for concrete. Today, it's $30 a yard for concrete. Tomorrow, it might be $100 a yard for concrete. Is if we don't build enough for some of that growth in the next three to five years, or 30 years, it may be constructive if by the time we say, oh crap, we need a bigger room.
Right. But I'm also getting at, such as he's stating that, you know, it's going to have cabinets and washer-dryers, whatever else you could have...
Doesn't mean every room's going to be used. It may be, the building may be there, but there may be rooms that don't have all the cosmetics, I guess, for lack of a better word.
But I'm also stating that we don't need the highest-end cabinets, and we don't need the highest-end everything else, when we can just kind of use, you know, like we only did have $1.8 million, and put some of that towards actually the things that we need to put the fires out.
We're not, we're not building the Taj Mahal.
No. A good chunk of this has to do with just the structural part of it, the foundation, and making sure that it's not going to move, and it's going to support the way to those trucks.
Yes, our biggest expense on this is...
I just don't want to see all of it going into a building, and then with what we have sitting in a parking lot that is broken down and from previous whatever, still sitting there, and we have to build an extra parking lot for that stuff.
All those things that you're talking about, that's all that I've thought about, is what, that's why building a station for that 30-plus-year range of future growth in this community, and then whatever funds are left over, to be able to, if we need to, to go ahead and purchase a new engine, or a new brush truck, or whatever it might be, so...
Yeah, I just would like to see some of that put back for future things.
Let's see what the design-build estimate costs are, because it may surprise us, it may be a lot cheaper than we think.
We're just going to be anywhere from $3.8 to $4.
Because, again, I was just, I'm just trying to state that if they were to give us $8 million, would we still be trying to spend $7?
No, ma'am. I mean, we're, again, not building the Taj Mahal, I'm building a fire station that's three bays, has living quarters, is for future growth, and we're not, we're not putting marble on the floors or marble countertops. It's a fire station.
I'm watching.
It's a fire station, you know. And so, we know we have an X amount of funds, and we want to make sure that we set it up for the wear and tear of firefighters.
Absolutely.
But also, to be able to live that lifetime that we expect of it. And so, and again, I don't want to build something too small, and then two years from now, we're trying to figure out what we need to add on to it. And when you start adding on to buildings like that, you start having...
And I'm not necessarily talking about how large the building's going to be.
Correct.
I do believe you need to make it what is going to be used.
Yes, ma'am.
You know. But I'm talking about the furnish-out, the finish-outs. I'm talking about the finish-outs. We don't need, you know, like you stated, marble, yada, yada, yada. You just need what you basically need. But I don't, I also believe that we, since it is for just the safety, I think we need to put a little tiny bit back. I would like to see us put enough back for our equipment, for our...
We think we can build it for four.
For our trucks, or whatever else we have coming up, because we are only going to get bigger. We are only going to need more things.
We are, and I don't, I mean, we are, this has been a thought process we've already had, and we're already ahead when it comes to that, is the goal is to, I like to keep something back. We know we're going to need some equipment, or if council decides they want to go this route when it comes to public safety, we would have those funds there to be able to purchase the equipment needed to be able to do that.
I'm just kind of frugal when it comes to that stuff.
Absolutely. And if you, if you wish, I will take you to a couple of stations that we have toward, that we have looked at, to give you an idea of what we're talking about, if you would like.
Well, I would like to be included on, like we had talked earlier, a year ago, I would like to be included, I'd like to be included on some of the decisions and things like that that you guys are trying to figure out.
And we will. This is the timeline. That was the next slide as we got to it. If you don't have questions on location or anything else, that was the next slide.
Can we take a break?
We can. We can.
Can we take a break?
It is 7:59. We'll recess for five minutes. Robert, did that help clarify what you were asking in the comment? A little bit?
If you guys understand, because they're different. There's different aspects. Sign build is typically, the way out of your studio is you basically, you build the shell, and then you say, okay, well, we want to change this, we want to put these things here. And then it's recent, it's authorized, come in, because then you've got to pledge it, but you're, it allows you to make all these changes, and the changes is where the group gets out of it.
And that's, and that's the difference with what we're looking at and talking to these chiefs, is we're going to, we're going with a design build with several companies who have an architect design. So when we lay out, when we do the architectural designs of this, the footprint, the square footage, that's the square footage, that's the layout, and then that price was based on whether it's 10,000 or 12,000 square foot. That's the information that I've been given, that's the path that we would have been going down, is to get that guaranteed price turnkey. Because there's different, you're right, there are many different.
In construction, I'm sure there's no such thing as guarantee. That's right.
Absolutely. But everybody that I've talked to and chiefs that have built buildings, and the last few that I've talked to that built the last few stations recently, each and every one of them has received money back from the company that they used that went back towards the city or went back towards additional expenses there. That's not a guarantee, you're right, it's not a guarantee, but that's one of the benefits or possibilities when it comes to design builds.
Can I just ask one more question, since we're out of the second. If, if the city were to build a smaller building, you only use 3 million of the money, can you put the remaining money in a savings account and where it's going to be used for public safety, or do you have to spend it all?
We don't have to spend it on those.
But you can put it in a savings account.
Yes, we can.
But this, this outlet's not working up here.
Hey, make sure your thing's plugged in, because mine wasn't plugged in. There's a plug underneath the chair in the ground.
Open it. And they keep.
So the new job agrees with you.
I like it.
Good.
You want to get a wire?
No.
You're fine.
I'm behind you.
That's very nice.
Well, that's good.
Very nice.
Huge. Huge, I said.
Good, thank you.
That's right from the cookie back.
So have they just started their department or his?
They actually started in November, this far, starting the groundwork.
So it is new.
And then they've hired us on the leadership team. We're now in the process of hiring them.
Exciting.
It's an exciting time.
Sunnyvale was in a little building life, but kind of like the duty hut over there.
Oh, yeah.
It was pitiful.
That place, I've driven all over town, place absolutely gorgeous. I didn't realize a lot of what's there until I drove all the neighborhoods.
There's a point when you realize, yeah.
Sunnyvale. Sunnyvale. And I don't think people realize, once you get off the main arteries and you go through the neighborhood, what's really there. That is absolutely.
It's on both sides of the highways, not just in one little area.
Exactly. I drove through the north part of Terrell one day, and they have all these big, beautiful, southern-style, like, like estate homes. Oh my gosh, wrapped around Portage, it's just beautiful. And you, when you, what, how would you find? Someone through it.
Galleries getting dark. Galleries, lights on.
I have to get this light something.
All right. Title five, we're back in session.
So the last page, as we finished up with location and the other questions there, the last page is kind of an estimated timeline in this process. You see their request for qualifications issued, July 30 submission is due, July 10, staff narrows candidate firms and invites construction proposals. July 28, staff makes recommendation to hire design build firm and council, or and council hires firm. Preliminary drawings, renderings provided to council, public for review and comments. Final plans provided to council on, for approval on October 27. November, groundbreaking construction begins. July 2021 anticipated completion. Of course, you know, there are things that can change this. This is just our, I guess, our estimated timeline, if everything was falling in place, if we all understand something that's got to move, but July of 2021, till our August, we could have the new station on the ground.
And there is a time, I think, for council input and public input, kind of go back into the schedule. We were going to, I'm not going to get involved in it, but I think chief needs to just work with the architect on functionality first.
Correct.
And get the layout down, and then, you know, at some point in time, we would, you know, bring you drawings and show you what we're looking at, and you would kind of give us the approval to move forward at that time. But we will have moments where we'll bring items for you and we'll show you the progress on it and where we're going and get opinions and public input.
Great.
You're speaking about potentially doing a down hall where the citizens would be able to look at the design, design plan, you know, ask you questions, just have them involved in the process.
Oh, absolutely. I think that would be exciting when we get there.
How many, how many firms are you guys expecting to put bids for this RFQ?
Been told that we'll have anywhere from 10 to 15.
Okay.
And that's just, she saw the last 10 years of a built station, said on average, when you do, we would probably expect it to work from 10 to 15.
And one of the things is, the majority of our city contracts that we have with other third parties, there's, there's a common theme has always been a do not exceed price. I would like to, if possible, I would like to see that's that way. I know you keep quoting a turnkey price, but I would like to see a do not exceed price as well, if possible.
Should you be interested in going and looking at some of the other stations? Are there a few in the area where we can go with?
Sure. Absolutely. Yes.
I'd be interested to talk.
Let me know.
You might need to take us in groups of two.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that. You can come up here and then we can go in. There's, there's a couple right here locally, not far from us, that we can go in, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at.
Locally.
Get a visual. Yeah, we better understand why they're built the way they are.
Yeah, just to see in models.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This last slide, it kind of deviates a little bit from the, the structure and the new station, but we were asked to kind of show a comparison, this goes back to budget, of the last, of what NCFD looked like when it first started in 2018, what it looked like this budget year, and then the proposed budget. So I think that bottom number was the one of most interest, it's just a comparison. So I've got that there if anybody has any questions on it, if you want chief to elaborate on how the staffing's changed, please do.
Okay. So year one, when we did the integration, we had my position, when we had the assistant chief's position, we had a captain free shift, AV and C shift, and then we had one full-time firefighter, firefighter driver role. And then we filled those other two positions with part-time. Back in April, whatever that was, came to council during that time, looked at the situation or the needs for the department and realized that we leave boots on the streets, so we eliminated or eliminated the assistant chief's position and came before council and asked to put two additional full-time people on the, on payroll. So we had three captains, myself, we had three captains, and then the three firefighter driver positions, as we call it. And then we run a 7A to 7P part-time position that was approved by council back in April. That's the difference, that, that was a change from year, from the 18, 19 to 1920, and that, that staffing model continues through 2021.
So have you applied for a safer grant again?
Have we?
Have you re-appplied for a safer grant or applied, applied for another safer?
Yes, ma'am.
We did. You would have to actually approve us accepting that. So if, I think it's a long shot, to be honest, we're still under one, there's going to be a lot of competition for this one. Due to COVID, they, they went in, we weren't going to apply for one because we didn't think we were in a position to do the match. Due to COVID, FEMA actually waived all of the cost match on it, so this will be three years without any additional cost for us if we were hiring new people. So we went ahead and threw it together and submitted it. If we, you know, if we get notified that, you know, it was, we can be funded, we'll certainly bring that to you.
When would we find out?
July, August. I think right now it's kind of pushed back, so.
They're never on time.
They'll do it early enough for, for cities to be able to, to make adjustments to their budgets. Yes, ma'am.
We, we applied for a vehicle grant too, and that was supposed to be, I think, and they, we haven't heard anything from that either, so I think they're running behind. You would have to accept, accept those funds.
Right.
And all the conditions associated with them. Anything else on that slide? All right. I'm going to move on to fee schedules, if that's all right with everyone. As part of the budget every year, we do review the fee schedule. We want to make sure that our costs are covered for the services that we provide. And if you look there on that slide, it doesn't seem on the surface level that we provide all that many services, yet we actually, even though our, our staff is fairly small, we outsource for a lot of things. So we want to make sure that if we're, for instance, it's a building permit, we want to make sure that our costs are covered and that part of salary for staff that has something to do with that service is also covered. So for instance, Judy's salary is, is covered by, you know, what we take in for building permits. So we go over those fee schedules, and the ones that came up this year that we look like we needed to change are up here. So the first one is the sewer rate. And last year, we did a sewer rate study, a utility rate study, and based on estimated increases from the city of Rockwall and North Texas Municipal Water District, we had a gentleman do a study for many years onto the future, and he came up with a proposed rates and their incremental increases over the years. And the idea behind that was that we would kind of spread that out so that we don't have one big jump one year, so all of a sudden, we don't have to raise great, you know, $10 or $15 to start covering our charges. The previous year, we actually started moving kind of backwards, we were kind of going into the hole a little bit and not covering all of our expenses. So that current rate kind of brings us even, and rate jump in if I'm not saying it correctly. And then that proposed rate actually will, I believe, keep us even as well, so we're not getting really ahead of ourselves, we're not putting a lot of extra money in the fund balance for utility, but we are keeping up. And what we want to avoid, we want to make sure that that fund is self-sufficient, that whatever those user fees are, that it's covering the costs.
And this is what was briefed to us last year?
Yes, yes. Last year, we paid for that study and.
But even this rate is the same as what was proposed?
That is exactly the increments that they proposed over time, so this is just that next step.
Is it?
Yes.
Just to make sure that we're on the current. If you guys have that set on the operation, $60,000 annual. If we, if we deliver, we keep that fixed at the same, we're not, we're not aiming at the ground, we're just not digging the hole. So your building is approximately $67,000 of the TAP fee revenue to break it off.
I think that's something that we'll just, I think we all just need to think about, you know, to, to realize that we're, we're paying that, or the, you know, the fund is paying that extra amount, so it's not on the citizens. Right? Is that how I'm reading that? So it's not on the, it's not on the citizens.
We don't want, we don't want the general fund to subsidize the sewer.
Yeah, we're talking in the, we're using for the reserves, that the TAP fee was supposed to be made for future maintenance repair or whatever, you've been using part of the reserves to fund operations.
So what is that, is that an hour out?
You've got about 770,000 in the reward now. And so we're going to, we're injecting into the reserve space, but in order to do that, you've got to take the rate to the 664.
And how long have we been operating like that? How many years?
It really started the year, current year.
So 2018.
Yeah. And that's, that's all driven by North Texas water supply, water. They're passing costs on to us and the other city that give their services in there, they're passing their costs off to us, that's why ours is different.
Again, I just want to make sure I get it right. So the city, McClendon Chisholm, has been keeping the rate lower and basically using the sewer reserve fund to keep that, to offset that, to keep the rate low for the sewer users.
But eventually, that's going to run out.
Right.
That money's going to run out.
Well, $700,000 or so.
That's the reserves, normal size, it would be a hill more out, and that probably is growing over as well. Are they taking away from it? Yes.
What are we putting on?
Would they eventually deplete it? I don't have that much. I think as long as new construction is going on, as long as that, some of it is going to be about survey, but you might need to watch later on. There's somewhere for the backside of TAP, even, you know, once it's completed, that is not going to happen.
Right. And that's when, if you look at that rate study, it should be in your packet there. That's when it goes up more than what you see here. So this rate jump from 57.75 to 60.64, if you kind of look at that, that long-term study that he did, when those, when we anticipate those TAP fees falling off as that development builds out, that's when you'll actually see more of an increase.
Yeah, he's gone out five years for what the sewer fees are going to be.
The next piece, please.
Okay. Pool permit fees.
Again, I just want to make sure I get it right. So the city, McClendon-Chisholm, has been keeping the rate lower and basically using the sewer reserve fund to keep that, to offset that, to keep the rate low for the sewer users.
But eventually, that's going to run out. That money's going to run out.
Well, 700,000 dollars or so.
That's the reserves. Almost how much could be available more than that probably is rolling over as well. Are they taken away from it? Yes. Would they eventually be completed? I don't have that much. I think as long as new construction goes along, some of it is usually about 70%. But you might be able to finish it. So what's left?
There's some way for the backs out of tap fees and, you know, once it's completed, that's not going to happen.
Right. And that's when, if you look at that rate study, it should be in your packet there. That's when it goes up more than what you see here. So this rate jumped from 57.75 to 60.64. If you kind of look at that, that long-term study that he did, when those, when we anticipate those tap fees falling off as that development builds out, that's when you'll actually see more of an increase.
Yeah, he's gone out five years for what the sewer fees are going to be.
The next piece, please.
Okay. Pool permit fees. I wasn't going to change this one, but we have had a couple of complaints that our pool permit fees were a little bit on the high side. So we did look, we did compare with our neighboring cities and we are a little bit high. So we can still cover our costs if we reduce it from the 500-plus inspection fees down to the 200-plus inspection fees. So that would be a total permit cost of about $500. Inspection fees are $75 each. It depends on how complex the project is, as to how many inspections are required. But generally, you're about four for a pool. Mechanical HVAC, there's no change in that, but I just put it in here as a comparison. All of our trade permits, the process for those are about the same. So whether it's plumbing, electrical, AC units. So we've got our plumbing permits and our electrical permits at 150, 150 plus inspection fees. So we're proposing that we go ahead. And part of this is just to make it simple for Judy and accounting purposes and everything else. Just make that just 100 for each plus inspection fees. And then a solicitor's permit, this is a new fee. At our last meeting, we approved an ordinance that requires a solicitor's permit. So we needed a fee to go along with that. So I asked Chief if he would kind of look into how much effort would have to be involved in kind of checking someone's background. So he felt like 100. We also kind of checked with neighboring cities as well, and this is pretty close. He felt like he could check up to four individuals attached to a solicitor's permit for about 100. And then if there's more than that, we thought we'd just kind of split that out and do $25 for each additional person attached to a permit. And so those are the only changes at this time that we're proposing. If something drastically changed, oh, they're not actually, there's some fire fees on here. If something changed during the year, North Texas came back and their rates were way higher than what we anticipate, it is possible that we'd have to bring something back to you for an amendment. But for right now, we think that sewer fee is going to cover it for now. If you look over on a separate sheet, Chief had to leave. He had a little emergency he had to take care of. But fire permit fees and miscellaneous fees, these are for third-party plan inspection reviews. So some of these fire, fire alarm systems, carbon dioxide systems, various ones. A lot of them are so complex, they actually require a third party to review. And that's pretty common throughout most of the fire departments throughout the county. So this just actually covers whatever that charge would be for those. So there's just a whole sheet on here. There's also a $50 fireworks fee for a professional show. So if Sonoma Verdi wants to do, they usually do an annual fireworks show, that fee would cover Chief looking at that plan, making sure it was going to be held at a safe location. It could cover, you know, if he has to go on-site and do anything to make sure that everything is supposed to be, you know, in order. I don't think anything on here is, I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. But if you have any questions, I'll try to field them. And if not, we can always get Chief to come back on another day and take those in. The very last one down here, miscellaneous, home occupancy inspection fee. Occasionally, we get a family that has maybe foster children or for whatever reason, they have to have some sort of a special fire inspection. So that's just to cover the cost of going out and doing those types of inspections.
Question?
I have a procedural question. What, how do we go about getting an extra or getting a fee on the fee schedule? Say, do we discuss it at council and say, we'd like to propose?
Yeah, fees are done by ordinance. So I'll actually have to, you know, if you all are pretty satisfied with this, before we adopted the new budget, I would actually bring you an ordinance or approval. So any council member can bring it up and I can always research it. And we can talk about it in council and make a decision if you want to change.
So I would just need to make a proposed agenda item for it?
Yes. Yes. And if you see something in here that, you know, I haven't addressed, you know, just send me a message or call me and we can certainly look at that. Since we're not making any decisions tonight, we will be, you know, all these will have to be finalized. So we can always look at something if you think I've overlooked it.
I think it's not really that you overlook it. It's just something that we've never discussed. And that's why I wanted to figure out the best way to bring it to council.
Sure. Anything else on fees? Okay. The next one is employee salaries. And my intent was not to go over everybody's individual salaries tonight, but I just wanted you to see what we've built into the budget that's proposed here. We're running a little bit further behind than what I thought. But what we built in here was a 3% to 5% increase for personnel. And that's assuming that, you know, the personnel have completed their, at least their one year in their position before they'd even be considered for that. And at that point, it's still merit. So for council appointees, that means that you would still have to decide if you wanted to give a raise or not give a raise. For Chiefs' personnel, that would mean that, you know, whoever he supervises, he would evaluate and give raises according within that category there. So that doesn't mean that everybody automatically gets a 3% to 5% raise. It means that we budgeted so that it could be funded that way. Salary adjustment for captains. We're actually losing, we've lost a couple of people to neighboring cities. And kind of looking at the salary scale, Chief felt like it was appropriate to have a little bit more of a gap between his firefighter pay and his captain pay. So the adjustment there, we're not really calling that a raise. We're calling that an adjustment. So we feel that that averages out to about 8%. Well, I guess it would be eight. They're all kind of the same, I think, same salary. Proposed code enforcement, public works position, that does add an entire salary line. And I can't seem to put my hands on it. Hang on a second. Is it 50, Ray? Did it?
The number would be 53,000 plus 64.
Well, with benefits and everything.
The number would be smaller than that.
Yes.
Would be 53,000 plus 64.
So that's full benefits with, you know, retirement and all the things that we have to fund with that. That position is actually proposed to be kind of a hybrid position where it would be code enforcement primarily, but it would also be kind of a public works position. So if we needed building maintenance done, we're actually proposing that this person take over the lawn maintenance at City Hall. We spend $700 a month, believe it or not, on lawn maintenance at City Hall. And it's frustrating in the winter months when I look out there and I know that no lawn maintenance is needed. So I'm proposing that this person take over that and that will actually save us some money in that. We actually have some lawn equipment that was purchased when we took on Station Two. The firefighters actually mow Station Two. And there's a two-acre lot over there, so they bought a riding lawnmower. I think all we'd have to do here is to get some sort of a trailer so they could haul it back and forth to City Hall, you know, in the summer months and keep that trimmed up. The only other thing they really do as far as the lawn maintenance is, you know, a couple of times a year, they do kind of a color change and a cleanup on the flower beds as needed. So we kind of feel like we can sort of throw all of that into this position. While COVID was happening and we didn't have meetings for a month, you might have noticed that we had the posts on the front stained here, restained. We had the parking lot restripped. It had not been restripped.
We were almost at the same spot this year. And I just don't, I don't see how that could actually happen. We may need to dig into that. But again, it's a mess of, so we're getting worried and now we go really digging into it until we get the real certified values.
So when we get the certified values, that's when you start examining what they provide?
Yeah, that's when you start answering questions. That helps you. How could that, how could that extension go up without match? Didn't we just have a lot of people turn sixty-five?
Turn sixty-five. Yeah, because last year it was only four hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah. This seems a little odd.
And these new formulas not have made them any more complex. And we think we've got it right. But, you know, every year the comp provider actually puts out the official worksheet. It's not out. You've got all these cities sitting here trying to do what you're doing tonight, and that worksheet isn't even available. So that's another, so if there's a lot of swag in this, it's going to be on that.
Yeah. The legislators didn't seem to concern themselves that when we do budget, we have to consider budget law, which is in the local government code, and we have to consider tax law, which is in another code, and we have to consider the election law, you know, in case we have to have an election related to a rollback. So it's almost like they just didn't consider the fact that all of those have dates and deadlines. And if we had been in the position where we needed to adopt early because we were going to have a more of an increase, we'd have to adopt in mid-August, which would really stress us. Fortunately, I don't think we're going to be in that position unless one of you or some of you want to fund something that we just have crazy not thought of. But as it, you know, unless somebody tells me different, I'm going to plan on adopting it in September, kind of under our usual schedule. But the challenges have been great as far as, I mean, for all cities, not just us, but for all cities, with the worksheets not being available and it's in the little budget season and all of these new rules and terms, and it's been a challenge. So I've actually taken the class twice now on the new budget and how it's supposed to work. We signed Ray up this year, and he took it as well. Our conference got turned into a webinar, but I think we're all on the same page as far as what we understand and how it works. But we are awaiting those new tax worksheets. As far as expenditures, we kind of went over the things that were the bigger changes in the budget earlier in the night, but if you have any particular questions on there, I'll try to answer them.
Please, the 426, could you remind me, please, what the appraisal district collection is?
The appraisal district CAD charges a fee for actually collecting the taxes. That's what that is. So we don't have to be the tax collector.
And on 506, the water bill is much higher than we had projected last year. Do you know why our water bill is increasing?
Because we have a leak? We did have a leak at one time. I don't know that that's all of it. I just think the rates seem higher than they previously were.
I think it was much less.
I think there was an increase too, though. You know, if you just look at it from month to month, I think there was kind of a jump in there. I don't think we're overwatering. You know, when we look at it, we're not soggy, well, we were when we had a leak, but I don't think that we're overwatering the grass. We did renew that item for lawn maintenance, assuming that if you hired the new code enforcement officer, we wouldn't need that line anymore. If you don't do the code officer, we'd need to add it back in.
I mean, I know personally, I want to, I'm happy to look at these line-by-line things, but I almost want to look at what we talked about today and think about what we want to fund.
Sure.
You know, such as the animal control and all that. Because basically, we're not looking at this cold turkey, but we haven't really had that much time to study this.
Absolutely. Right. And it wasn't meant that you, I don't even expect you to comment on it tonight. It's just provided here for you to ask questions if something comes to mind. You may have thought of something you want to fund that I didn't think of, you know, and that's fair too. So you can certainly call me or email me, and we can put that on for the next one to discuss. I'm not going to propose that we have a meeting every week on the budget. I don't know that we're going to need it unless you all really do want to have, you have some ideas that I haven't thought of and, you know, that are just kind of way out there. But there is a proposed budget adoption calendar here in the back and kind of just goes through. We had our special meeting tonight. I don't think we'll be ready to come back next week and have another one on budget because I need to absorb any comments you give me and feedback and that sort of thing. But I think on the 23rd, if we had a regular meeting, if we can keep the items short, maybe we could have a budget meeting that followed it right after, if we needed to address one or two items, or if we needed to get my coker here for a short presentation, something like that. So we could structure it to where, you could do it either way. You could either have special meetings, or if we can keep our regular agendas as short as and sweet as possible, then we can just tag on a short work session. I don't want you to have to do them for six hours at a time because I think when you're looking at numbers especially, it just gets too overwhelming. But those are regular meetings. There is one change in there. July 14th is a regular meeting day, but that is also the runoff election day, and we'll be using City Hall that day.
I was wondering about that.
Yes. So I'm actually on the next agenda. I'm going to propose that maybe we back that meeting up to the 7th. That'll still give us two weeks after the 23rd meeting, so it'll kind of feel like it's about the right time anyway. I don't want to skip it. I think we do need a meeting, especially with budget, but I think we, unless something unusual happens, I don't see that we'll have to have an extra meeting one in there. The 25th is only on there because that's the date that I'm supposed to, that's the deadline to get the certified values, and that's when we can really start firming things up. August 4th, I did put in as a special meeting, and that is because I, you know, as soon as we can, I want to get the right, the firm numbers to you. And maybe we won't be ready by then, but we'll get them to you as soon as we can. So we may kind of have to, we kind of schedule that loosely, but we confirm it up as we get a little bit closer. The 11th, for your doc on the 22nd, the 11th is about the date that I need you all to set that maximum tax rate. And you don't, you can always go less, but at some point in time, you kind of have to set that we won't go over a certain number. And then following that, the next one would be that we have to clean that up and officially file it in Shelley's office for public review. So we just kind of have to get it. You could still change it after that as far as the budget numbers. You just can't take, change that tax rate after that day. Can't go up. You can't increase it. You can decrease it. And then I think one thing the legislature did do this year, and this was to help the people that had to adopt early, was you just have to have one public hearing now instead of two, so we can actually hold the budget and tax rate public hearings at the same time. So I just kind of put in the 25th. And then I thought after the tax rate public hearings, you probably want a meeting to discuss any input from the public. You wouldn't want to adopt maybe that next meeting, and we still have time. So I allowed a meeting for discussion on the 8th, and then I put adoption down on the 22nd. And then your new year begins on October 1st. And, you know, those dates can slide a little bit here and there. You know, if we figure that we need an extra meeting as we move along, we can build one in. But that's just kind of the original calendar I came up with.
Any questions?
I would just suggest, if you do have questions, you know, email me, and I can also, I can kind of compile those, and I can bring them to the next meeting so that I have answers that everybody can benefit from. If there's something that is not funded that you have an interest in funding, send me a message, and I can go get prices or quotes or whatever's needed for that and bring that back for everyone too. If there's something in there that you really don't want to fund, let me know that as well. If there's something in the middle you don't want to do, you know, you don't want a full code officer, you really want to do part-time, you know, let me know on that too. You've built enough in here for surplus that unless it's a huge change, it's very unlikely you'd have to change the tax rate off of what's here. So lots absorbed for one night, but this is just our first go at it.
All right, guys, if there's no other questions, it is 9:13. We've got to go. We've been on here, maybe there?